Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the in the audience and the TV audience as well to the Pitt County Planning Board Meeting of July the 18th. As most of you know, I know the board knows that Beth is not with us and she's gone on to another career, but we want to say thank you for all that Beth has done for the county. She's been faithful and she's done a good job and we appreciate all that Beth has done on the planning with the Planning Board and in the Planning Department. At this time, James, would you call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Fay Barefoot.
Here.
Frank Bradham. Jacob Cox.
Here.
Lynn Evans.
Here.
Limon Hardy.
Here.
Wanda Harrington.
Here.
Thomas Harris.
Here.
Taylor Keith.
Here.
Clay Malloy.
Here.
Porter Stokes. William Wooten. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you, James. Let's all stand and we're going to have a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance by Taylor Keith. Everyone stand.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day, for this board, for the people of this county. Lord, help us to have a sound judgment to make the decisions for the benefit of Pitt County. Lord bless the men and women of our military who give us a freedom which we're so thankful for. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have in front of you a copy of the minutes and we do have one corrections to the minutes to make tonight. Taylor Keith was present at our last meeting, which the minute shows he was not, so we'd like to make that correction. Is there any other corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
All right, minutes approved. You want to raise your hand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the proposed city of Greenville Extraterritorial Jurisdiction Extension and Eric Gooby, I believe, recognize him.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Good evening. Tonight we do have, our first request is, it's a request by the City of Greenville to extend the existing extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETJ westward to include parcel number 56551. Property is owned by Greenville Auto Auction Site LLC. This property is approximately 15.78 acres, the entirety which is included within the proposed expansion area. The purpose of the request is to allow the property owner to utilize this site for future expansion or improvements to the existing business. This business is already located on the adjacent property which is currently within the city's ETJ already. Additionally, this request would allow the property owner to mitigate stormwater requirements for improvements made on that adjacent property. This is a map of the property, you can see, just to orient yourselves with the location, this would be Allen Road and Greenville Boulevard, the intersection with Dickinson Avenue, and then the Frog Level intersection with Dickinson, US 13. The area you see in red, that's the county zoning, that's general commercial, that's Oxford Park, it's an existing planned commercial development out there, and the area that's highlighted in the yellow hash marks is the proposed extension area. As you see, it's only one parcel, so there's only one affected property owner under this Pitt County does have an ETJ extension policy, there's a copy of which is in your packet for tonight. With adoption of the countywide zoning in 2003, the commissioners adopted this policy regarding the expansion of the ETJs. The purpose is to evaluate the municipal ETJ extension requests and to determine the municipality's capability of and commitment to good planning and management of development. Under the policy, the municipality must prepare a report that demonstrates how it can meet the criteria that's established in that policy. Commissioners will also solicit public comments and opinions from the residents that are affected within that ETJ expansion area. Then, any request that's initiated by the landowner, which is the case for tonight, must be submitted to the municipality for review, and you've also got a copy of the resolution from the Greenville City Council in your package as well, in supporting that extension request. Things that we take into consideration under the ETJ policy, whether the municipality has an adopted land use plan that covers the area in question, whether there's subdivision and zoning regulations need to be amended to cover that area, whether it's in a logical area or has a geographical connection to the existing corporate limits of the ETJ, whether it's in within what we consider an anticipated and natural growth area. It also must not be part of an area being considered by another jurisdiction and there must be a demonstration in need for that extension. The process that has to be followed under the policy, this would be the first step, the initial request before the Planning Board, Planning Board will solicit the comments from the public regarding the extension request. There'll be some, there's been public notification, we've advertised in the Daily Reflector, we've also sent notices to the, to the one affected property owner. Then there's, following the public comment session, the board will submit a recommendation to the county commissioners, and the commissioners will hold a subsequent public hearing and take action on the extension request. Some facts about an ETJ extension, if the ETJ is approved by the commissioners, the municipality has to follow procedures outlined by the state statutes. They have to notify the affected property owners, take more solicitation of comments, and then have to have a public hearing to establish the zoning for that property. Municipal taxes are not imposed or collected within the ETJ, and the municipal land use code such as zoning and subdivision regulations, any permanent minimum housing code requirements and building code requirements are enforced within the ETJ. As far as impacts on any affected property owners, new land uses and building development must meet the city's zoning and or building code requirements, they'll no longer be under the county's jurisdiction, and representation of the overall ETJ area is provided on the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, but not on City Council. Staff's recommendation for the request is that we do find it is consistent with the criteria of the county's ETJ policy. The land use plan for the city does currently incorporate this area. The existing municipal and ETJ limits for the city are also in close proximity and areas within an anticipated and natural growth area for the city. It's located within a planned development, again Oxford Park, that is currently split by the city's ETJ. The rear portion is actually within the city's municipal limits, there's a front portion along US 13 that's within the ETJ. Water service is available and sewer service may be extended in the future, and the geographical location of the property does make it more conducive to be served by the city. So with that, Planning Staff does recommend approval of the request. The next steps following this, again, will be a commissioner's public hearing on August 20th. And with that, Mrs. Madam Chairman, we would like to open up the public comment session.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak, have comments to make? Okay, I'd like for you to state your name and come to the podium, please.
My name is Steve Janowski, I'm with JS Janowski Engineering. I represent Greenville Auto Auction LLC, and it's been very well stated as to the reasons that we've put it together. This piece of property joins two other parcels which are currently actively used by Greenville Auto Auction. They were expanding their business and they had, and part of that included personnel too, bringing new employees in with the enterprise rental car facilities that were back in there. And as a result of the process, what ends up happening is it's, we found that they had all this additional land that basically would dilute stormwater requirements, keep it in that place until it's ready for a future expansion. Without that, the biggest reason is it became very punitive in the way the orders are set up, that how much money was needed required in order to buy down nutrients for a small section when we had so much open land that was already adjacent to and a part of and in ownership of that piece. So it's in two separate jurisdictions, one was with planning's jurisdiction, the other was the city jurisdiction, and we really have no mechanism for our cooperation in that piece, and so between the city planning and the Greenville planning, they came up with a plan that made sense, which was to bring that piece into the ETJ, allow that to total three tracks of land which become adjacent or were adjacent to one another to become a, I guess, approved and looked at by the city of Greenville, and that way any issues with stormwater would be by one authority and not between two different authorities. So I'm here for any question that you may have.
Any questions from the board for him? Okay, thank you. Is anybody else speaking, have any comments in the audience? Any comments from the board, our present board? We need a motion at this time.
May I entertain that we take the staff's recommendation and approve?
Second. All right, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. The next item on our agenda is number five, Comprehensive Land Use Plan Implementation Priorities, and Mr. Gooby has that one.
Yes ma'am. As we said before at several meetings, with the land use plan that was adopted back in December, we have taken the goals and objectives for the nine areas of concern that are listed in the plan, and we've prioritized those strategies, implementation strategies, for each of those goals and objectives. And what you see before you, we're not going to go through all of it, you've got the entire prioritization matrix in your packet tonight, it's probably about 20 pages long, so we're not going to go through each one, but just to give you an example of what we got, this would be the objectives and implementation strategies for community health, particularly with the section on alternative modes of transportation. And under each objective, you see there's several implementation strategies that are listed, and we've assigned a relative priority to each one, high, moderate, or low. For this one, it's primarily high and moderate, and the high, those are those strategies that we expect to be completed within the next five years. The moderate, expected completion dates between the next five and 10 years, and then anything that's low, we have yet to determine those completion dates. So what you see here are priorities that we see as being completed, at least within the next 10 years, for these alternative modes of transportation. Some of them are ongoing, such as the first one, the continue with the Pitt County Priority Projects as listed in the Greenville NPO Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, that's going to be an ongoing project, one that we don't necessarily have an end date for, but that still retains a high priority. The other thing we've got on this list is other responsible agencies, for instance, with some of these, you'll see that the Greenville Urban Area NPO, it would be responsible for helping with some of these, NC DOT and Public Health. So what you see throughout the spreadsheet that you've got is, for each objective, we have various responsible agencies. There's also a listing on page 29, we've abbreviated them so that we could fit them in the table, but on page 29 you have the key that lists out the full name for each of those agencies that have been abbreviated. And then, the last column on this that you see is there's an implementation efforts, these are efforts that we've already undertaken to try to implement these strategies. With the first one, again, with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, you see we've got the implementation of the County Home Road Crosswalk Project, and happy to say that that project is pretty much complete, the crosswalk is in place, and so that is one project that we can start to mark off our list. Other things such as involvement with the Save Communities Coalition and the City of Greenville Bike-Ped Committee and such, but we, what we're asking for tonight is for the board to, if you have any comments or questions, we'd be happy to answer anything about any of these items in this table, and also to, we're asking to get a favorable recommendation or favorable endorsement on these priorities so that we can forward these on to the Board of County Commissioners at the August 20th meeting. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Gooby? Any questions, comments?
One thing I want to add to, Madam Chairman, is part of the implementation strategies, one of the things that will be coming up pretty soon is, one of the implementation strategies is to try to encourage more farmers' markets or to make our zoning regulations more receptive for farmers' markets, and so we've had some discussions with the property owner in the R40 district in the county, and they have expressed an interest in doing a farmers' market, but the zoning ordinance currently does not allow for that. And so what we've discussed with them is, part of these implementation strategies is to amend the zoning ordinance to allow those in that permitted use table in the R40, so that's something you'll be seeing coming up sometime in the near future.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we go ahead with the recommendations and approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. All right, next item, thank you, Mr. Gooby, next item, Maintenance of Subdivision Streets, I believe James Rhodes will bring that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting on page 50 of your agenda package tonight, we wanted to broach the subject with you concerning issues that have been brought forward to staff over the last several months concerning particular issues with street maintenance within subdivisions, and of course, typically these are dealing with proposed public streets within subdivisions. Matt Spicer has prepared a staff report for you, the senior package tonight, and kind of details some of the guidelines, some of the regulations that are in effect in our subdivision ordinance. And again, this is a first blush over with the board tonight, we realize several of you have come on the board since the time that we have kind of not had a lot of development done in the county, so you may not be as experienced with these regulations as some of our more seasoned members on the board, such as Mr. Hardy that's been with us a few times before. So we want to give you that opportunity tonight to ask some questions, kind of get a first feel for what we've collected so far, and maybe give staff a little bit of direction for the future as to where we go with the review of this particular item. What we have done so far is actually look at some issues out in the county, and on the screen you can just see a couple of examples, again, proposed public streets, the intent would be, as far as our regulations are concerned, a subdivision plaque comes through for review and approval by this board or by staff, if it has subdivision streets included, those streets are built to a certain standard, staff reviews it, NC DOT reviews it, NC DOT also ensures that the road is built to a certain standard at the time that we either approve the final plat or if we're holding a financial guarantee for those improvements to go in within two years, that those roads are built to that standard before that financial guarantee is released. So again, that is not a maintenance guarantee, that is just a financial guarantee to ensure that the improvements are put in appropriately at the onset. However, there is a timeframe there between the time that the development goes in, homes are constructed, the economy goes up and down, and there's also a certain requirement, a certain threshold that has to be met per DOT requirements before the roads can be accepted for maintenance by the state. So, in certain situations like shown on the screen, you may get in a development where this is a concern, roads begin to deteriorate before DOT takes them over, then it's a matter of who is responsible for maintaining these roads and bringing them up to standards so DOT will accept maintenance. And these are just some examples of what's out there in the field right now. So, the other part of that too is, these streets, they, there's a certain process as far as petitioning the state for acceptance, and that is typically on the developer to pursue that at the appropriate time. Sometimes developers may want to delay that petitioning if they know a lot of constructions going on, they know that backhoes, large tractors, trucks, a lot of traffic's coming in, there may be some damage to the roads, they'll want that completed before they petition the state. So there are reasons why they're kind of held off for a while before even petitioning DOT for acceptance. Certainly, depending on, right now, you know, development is moving along fairly slow, there are a lot of developments out there that have been platted, roads are in, not a single house is in the subdivision today. In those cases, DOT will not take those roads over until they meet specific density requirements, and there's a whole laundry list of certain things that have to be met before DOT will even consider it. So, what we've done from the staff level to date is actually gone out in the field, and I'd like to introduce a couple of our interns that are with us tonight that have been instrumental in collecting some of this street inventory data. We have Josh Lawls and Chris Lawson with us, both of them have been out assisting with some of this. Those were the two. We also have another intern with us tonight that's assisting with some other projects, but Josh and Chris in particular have been out to help with this process, and what you'll have, we didn't include the whole spreadsheet with you tonight, but we just wanted to brush over some of the preliminaries. There are about 300 road segments in the county that are proposed for public maintenance, and they're in different states of disrepair, some are very good, some are brand new, some have been out there for years. So we try to conduct this inventory, those close to 300 road segments equate to about 35 miles of roads in the county that are proposed public streets. So we've collected the information and tried to somewhat categorize them as to what the condition is currently. New condition, you can see, or good condition, this one actually has a roll curb on the side and you can see it's in very good shape. Here, you've got a road that's still in good shape, this has a ditch segment along both sides of the road right of way, and again, the road pavement itself and the ditch section is in very good shape. As we're going further down the list, fair condition, these are just a couple of examples, you can see some cracks developing in this particular road segment, and also some wear and tear, some issues with the crumbling of pavement right on the edge of the driveway And finally, poor condition, you can see this road, actually the lighter spots in the road are where someone has gone in and actually filled that in with concrete, and that's, as far as DOT concerns, that's not acceptable as far as, when they come out to do their punch list for the review of this. Here's another example where basically the pavement has deteriorated and you can see there's been some damage to even the base material underneath that. So from our preliminary assessment, you can see we do have about 8% of the roads that we've surveyed appear to be in poor condition, that's equates to about three miles, a little bit better than a third, right at 36%, in fair condition, that equates to about 12 and a half miles, and a little bit better than 50% are either in good or they're in relatively new condition, and that equates to about 19 miles. And as we've mentioned, there are reasons and there's a process for going through the petitioning process with DOT, certain criteria that have to be met, not only for the road construction, but the density of development within the subdivision. For example, DOT will not take over any street that has less than four homes gaining access onto it. So if there's a short cul-de-sac bulb, you've got two lots on the corner, two coming off the cul-de-sac bulb itself, all four of those lots have to have driveways onto the cul-de-sac street itself and not the other corner, the other road that creates the two corner lots. Just an example, there've been some situations where we've actually had to make conditions on plats. Those of you that have been on the board for a while may remember some of these shorter subdivision streets, we've actually indicated, or DOT has, that lots 35 and 38 have to take access off a particular road, that ensures that it will meet the density requirements once the homes are constructed. Also, there has to be at least two occupied residences for every one tenth of a mile, so there's a lot of different criteria that has to be met before it's considered, at least 20% of the lots boarding the road must be individually owned. In other words, the developer, as soon as the roads are improved, that developer may own all the lots, it would not meet the requirements of DOT for maintenance or acceptance for Again, there's a petition process, once that petition goes through NC DOT, there's typically a punch list, it can be anything from driveway tiles or inappropriately sized, there are permanent types of mailboxes such that might be bricked in or some type of permanent structure that's within the road right of way, those types of structures have to be removed, there may be areas on the asphalt that are compromised, any of those things that are recognized by the DOT officials when they go out have to be corrected before DOT will consider taking over the roads for maintenance. So, some other factors that have to be considered from the local government standpoint, and you'll have to understand too, the state of North Carolina's a little different than most states in our country in that the state maintains roads. Typically, the secondary roads in most states are maintained by the counties, we don't have that system here. So if you'll kind of equate this situation over to what happens in municipalities, there's really only two parties involved. You have the developer, he develops it to a certain extent and to a certain standard, and the municipality will take it over for maintenance. Here, we've got local government, we've got a developer, and then we've got the state involved. And what we've got is a time period in between development and when it meets certain DOT requirements, a lot of issues can come up. Developers can go bankrupt, they can die, LLCs can be dissolved, there's any number of issues that can pop up during that time of limbo. Other things, as far as our subdivision ordinance is concerned, there are, as we go back and review our ordinance, there's some concerns about the enforcement mechanisms that are in place. In particular, we say that the developer is responsible for maintaining these proposed public roads until the time the DOT takes them over for maintenance. There is no definitive explanation as to what level of maintenance that has to be. It's somewhat subjective, and that's hard to enforce. Also, there's an issue, as I mentioned, when a developer may die, when there's a successor in interest, a lot of times the county may not have standing in any legal proceedings after that. And there are always these nuances in just about any case, and it takes an awful lot of our legal staff's time to go through and identify who exactly was the subdivision, what's their current status, and how can we proceed on with any enforcement mechanisms. So, potential solutions, and this is where we'd like to welcome your input tonight, what would be a standard level of acceptance, acceptable maintenance if the developer is holding on to the roads for their purposes for a while longer? Do we need? Do we need to consider any type of maintenance guarantees? And there's a whole list of items that need to be considered with that. There is special legislation, and our assistant county attorney, Lisa Overton, is with us tonight, and she can fill you in on all the various details of the legislation that's available, that counties can actually invoke a special tax assessment over a particular development site to ensure that the roads are brought up to standards based on the funding that's brought out from those affected landowners. And certainly, any other creative ideas you may have. So our next steps, certainly, you've just got a little bit of the information tonight. I'm sure you've got a lot of questions. We'd like to bring you additional information and bring some of the stakeholders in, too. You may have seen, there was an article in the paper a couple of days ago, our office has received a number of calls from developers, companies that want to go in and patch asphalt potholes, landowners, and even had some contact with DOT officials. So there's a lot of stakeholders involved here. We feel like, as we're going through this process, we want to take the time necessary to bring back some strong recommendations to our Board of Commissioners if any changes are recommended for our subdivision ordinance. So with that, Madam Chair, would welcome any comments or suggestions from the board.
Madam Chair. James.
Yes, sir.
I'm one of those seasoned mamas you were talking about, but I would like to see, for you to get the guy from North Carolina Department of Transportation in here. He's got a lot of questions, like, one question, and you could probably answer them all, but if a subdivision, say, is 15, 20 years old, still not, you know, on the state maintenance stuff, it's got potholes all in, I'm pretty sure you know the subdivider I'm talking about, who asked us for the state to come in? Does it take the whole subdivision to petition the state, or?
Yeah, I will defer to the DOT official. There are options there, it doesn't necessarily have to be the subdivider, but there are some thresholds as far as the number of landowners, affected landowners that have to sign that petition. So that's a good question for them.
You think you could get it in here?
I think I can, if not next month, certainly in September. Other comments or questions?
Any other comments?
That last section in the ordinance C, that's pretty broad where it says the subdivider will maintain the proposed streaks and associated improvements until they are officially accepted. That's a long period of time, really is something to consider.
And that's the point, you've mentioned it, Thomas, is that the other part of that is what is considered, what is an acceptable level of maintenance during that time period? So you, it can be five years, 10, we're now seeing 15 or 20 years before the density requirements might be met.
It looks like you would have to maintain it in the condition that it would be accepted by the state the way it reads.
I think so.
That has been staff's interpretation, but it's not explicit in-
It could be a long time on some of them, too, though.
Exactly.
Since Lisa is here tonight, would you like to give us some comments back, Lisa? If you would. Bring us up today.
Good evening. The legal department has been involved in this process in terms of providing research as it relates to various legal options that would be available to individual property owners or these subdivisions that might find themselves in the way of having roads that have not yet been accepted by DOT. In terms of what the county, however, is able to do, you know, our hands are tied to the extent that we only have the authority in the state of North Carolina to do what the statutes confer upon us to do. We're Dillon's rural state, so we can only do what the statute allows us to do. There is a provision in North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A205, that does permit a county, and notice they say permit, a county upon a request or petition of 75% of individuals to be assessed to finance the cost of road repair for a neighborhood subdivision and assess the individual property owners the cost of that repair. So in essence, the county could front the money to have the road repairs done, and the property owners would be specially assessed to pay that back. There are requirements, it is a process that we've not indulged in here in Pitt County, but again, it would require 75% of the property owners to be assessed to file the petition, and they also, it must also consist of 75% of the property owners that, what's the word I'm looking for, that are on that road frontage. So they can't-
You've got to live on it.
That's right, you have to live on that particular road and also meet that threshold. So that is an option that is available from the county's standpoint, certainly in the legal department, and I also know with planning staff, we're available to answer questions, to provide our files and our records and interpretation, to assist various neighborhoods that may have these issues, and we've done a bit of that certainly along the way these past several months. But in terms of what the county's option really is at this time, in terms of enforcement, we can either enforce the ordinance as it's written against an existing subdivider, or in the case where there may be a subdivider that's passed away, where there's, the county does not have a viable defendant, our hands are really tied in terms of pursuing a successor in interest, or an heir, or relative, or things of that nature. So that's pretty much been our involvement, and again, we stand ready to assist planning staff and these subdivision owners to help address their concerns. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are you able to put an assessment on the remaining lots if the density requirement hasn't been met by whoever the heir of the subdivider is?
That's a good question. The way that I interpret the statute is that the petition must come from 75% of those to be assessed, but that those who would be included in the total assessment would include all of the property owners that have property on that road, or that abuts the road.
That's what I'm saying, is if 75% of your property owners that front on the road petition, it seems like maybe that petition could, rather than assessing the folks who bought a house and lot under the assumption that it would be taken over by DOT, the assessment could be put on the owner, the heir of the owner of the remaining lots, since it was, if it was weighting on the density requirement, rather than assess folks who bought it in good faith that the road would be maintained and ultimately adopted. If the density requirement hasn't been met, that means there's still a bunch of lots left undeveloped.
That's right.
So at least maybe the county could put a lien on those remaining lots and get their money back at that point.
That's an interesting interpretation. I see what you're saying, you're saying in those areas where the density requirements aren't met, that the effect of the 75% would be to target perhaps the subdivider or the owner of the existing lot, so they would end up making the repair themselves. Haven't, again, we haven't applied this process, but it certainly seems a way to get to the root of the issue. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. James, I feel that it would be good just to bring in, ask the staff to bring in the stakeholders and all those that are involved, so the planning board would know, you know, which direction to go.
For our next meeting, then, we'll plan to bring in first DOT officials, and that can give you some of the background as to what their requirements would be, and certainly they can address better the petitioning process, and they've got some real-world examples. And you have to understand, too, the Department of Transportation has a tremendous road network. I believe North Carolina has the second highest road mileage in the nation that's maintained by the state, and certainly, you would not want, in their defense, I guess, wouldn't want the state to take over roads that were not brought up to standard or weren't currently at standard. That's going to require additional state funds to make sure that they're maintained appropriately. So it stands to reason, when they're accepting those, they want them in good shape so they can go about maintaining those for the long haul. So, next meeting that we hold, we will try to certainly get DOT officials here, and we'll be looking at bringing probably some subdividers in and maybe some affected landowners at the appropriate time. Any other questions about that particular item?
Okay, thank you, James, and I believe you're up next for the informational items.
Right. Briefly, we have several informational items, these, several of these are follow-up items that you've dealt with previously. The Donna Spence rezoning that you dealt with a couple of months ago was approved by the commissioners about a month ago. American Materials Company, you probably have read in the paper a number of times about, there've been some articles concerning a new sand mine that was proposed in the Belvoir community. There were community, a community meeting that was held in Belvoir as well. The commissioners actually tabled that action at one of their meetings, came back the following meeting, and it was approved. So, a sand mine, a new sand mine has been approved by virtue of a conditional use permit at the intersection of NC 222 and Old River Road north of the river. Kimberly Alexander conditional use permit, that was concerning a in-home daycare that was also approved by the commissioners. Good news on the front of floodplain management, the county has seen a reduction in our community rating system classification. That is a good thing as far as folks that may be purchasing flood insurance here in the county. What it does overall, number one, it recognizes the county for some of our flood prevention activities, and that's everything from hazard mitigation planning to floodproofing and those sorts of things. But in effect, what happens for folks that are purchasing flood insurance here in the community, it reduces those rates by 5%. So every point we go down from 10, we reduce it by 5%, so we now have a full 15% reduction since we're now classified as a Class VII. And we have received our plaque as of today, it was hand-delivered, and this took effect actually back on May 1st. Couple of items we just wanted to bring you up to date on, one Eric has already alluded to, we are moving forward, we, the county has received two VITALIT Foundation grants, specifically that the planning office will be involved with. One is Walk This Way Program, and that is the trail extension to the farmer's market, and also helping with the crosswalk across County Home Road to connect all the activities on the farmer's market side, that with the district park on the opposite side of the road. We also, as we brought you up to date previously, we're active in some homeless prevention activities, and we have received some funding there from the foundation for medical expenses for certain homeless individuals. So to give you a little bit better idea of where the crosswalk is going, if you look on the screen, you can see the village of yesteryear, which is now located out on County Home Road just adjacent to the farmer's market. The crosswalk will be basically dead center of their property, and will connect right over to the corner of where the greenhouse property is and the community garden being right back here in the far corner, all just adjacent to the Alice F. King District Park. So that will be your crosswalk.
Is, what, what kind of crosswalk?
Actually, what's shown on the screen here, you can see there's already been a couple of concrete medians installed in the, what now is the center turn lane on County Home Road, and there will be designated signage and an area where folks are pretty much funneled across versus now we've got people kind of strewn along the road, they're crossing just about at any given point. People will be funneled in by virtue of the trail extensions to a certain point, and there will be these refuge islands here that will allow folks to at least get halfway across, assess what's coming in the opposite direction, continue across the county home road segment. So we feel like it's going to be a much, much safer situation versus people randomly crossing at different points along the road.
That's Daytona 200 out there, you know, they fly.
It is, and when we have some of the DOT officials here, we may want to ask about the speed limit in that particular area. And I tell you, our interns are actively developing some brochures. Again, this is a 55 mile an hour zone here. People need to be educated as to how to appropriately use a crosswalk. If people are moving at that speed, you need to stop halfway across and assess what's coming in the other lane before going completely across the road segments. So we'll be working with some folks that are active in this area to make sure that we get the folks educated best we can, especially, we do have students from time to time that come from the elementary school to either go to the district park or the community garden. We absolutely want to ensure that folks get across there safely. And you, again, you can see, been out on site, hopefully, that most of the signage, everything should be completed, the intent is before school starts at the end of August, so they're well along the way there. And as I mentioned, we did get $5,000 also for assistance with some of our homelessness programs. Also, you've probably seen an article in the paper about a project that we're working on in Winterville for a replacement home. This is just adjacent to the town hall. We have a group that has come into the county, this is their second year running, this is a Baptist group out of College Park Baptist Church in Winston-Salem. They've chosen to bring their resources and talents here to Pitt County and pair with Billy Torren's group, which is here permanently, Drift and Mission Ministries, and prior to their arrival, Billy and his group had gone out there and basically completed the foundation in the subfloor, and this is the first day that they arrived, this was the week of July the 4th, and you can see, first day, midday, walls already up. Had about 50 total volunteers to come in various times during the week, and also, the homeowners are right here in front of this group, proud homeowners, as they're also helping with some of the construction. This is about midweek, right on July the 4th, where you can see, you know, the roof is already on, some of the shingles being installed, and by the end of the week, we already, or they already had it dried in. We've got the sheet rock inside, dried in. As you recall, last week, we got an awful lot of rain, so dry and hot the week of 4th of July, last week, a lot of rain, but it was already dried in, so they were continuing work on the inside, siding's been installed, and you can see just last week, sheet rock's being installed. So within about two weeks, we've got a house well on the way, and the intent is to complete this hopefully by the end of this month. So we are very happy to have this group from College Park to come in, and again, they bring resources, they bring the funding for a lot of the necessary supplies that go into this home, and just a few things left to actually move the family in there. The county will be participating by virtue of using some of our community development funds to demolish the existing home, which of course is an older home, has asbestos, we have to demolish it a certain way, and what you'll end up with is a nice new home just adjacent to Winterville's Town Hall. And again, Town of Winterville, Martin Community Action, USDA, we've got a number of other volunteer groups and partners that are involved in this process. Also in your package, we have a couple of monthly reports for May and June, and of course, a lot of this information, a lot more is on our website, and we welcome folks to go to that and visit some of the information that we have and provide any comments they might have. That's all we have for tonight.
Thank you, James.
Hey, build that house fast, and you can get a permit, then.
Any comments from the board before we leave?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
All right, thank you. All right. All in, baby.
I bet.
All right. Bye-bye.